Based on the size of the parcel, the property was originally had six special assessments for those set improvements. Prior to, the prior owner elected to convert five of the water and sewer assessments totaling sixty-two thousand and change to a future connection charge. Based upon the future connection charge provisions, the original balance had an accruing simple interest of three percent for the CPI annually. The twenty-two balance of that future connection charge is just under ninety-four thousand dollars. Future connection charge provisions have been in place since two thousand and four, and the language indicates that owners are allowed to, owners of homesteaded, larger, partially developed properties, the ability to convert sanitary sewer and water assessments to future connection charges for the undeveloped areas of that property. The intent of the future connection charge is to allow a deferral of those additional assessments until the property is developed or subdivided. Since future connection charges were not assessments, they are not certified with the county. However, just staff does disclose future connection charges as part of requests of assessment searches that are performed by title companies for land sales and refinances. After reviewing the proposed offer and all applicable material related to the request in front of you, staff, our administration has concluded that there is not a justification to warrant formal consideration of any alteration to the future connection charge that are applied to the property. The charges were properly established in two thousand and six, and all assessment searches that were requested since that time have included the future connection charge disclosures. Staff is not supportive of independent negotiations related to future connection charges on the basis that it was set precedent for the other eighty-six outstanding future connection charges that were in existence at the end of the calendar year in two thousand and twenty-one. Based on those factors, staff is recommending the council not consider Foss's offer. We do recognize, however, that there is a need for review or discussion of the future connection charge policy. When adopted in two thousand and four, the thought or idea was that residential development or growth pressures would result in the future connection charges being paid as properties were bought or developed. With the changes in the residential real estate market since two thousand and eight, future connection charges have the potential of reaching balances that may exceed the value of the property which we encounter intuitive to the original intent of the future connection charge policy. As staff, we recognize that there's a struggle between the balance, the fiscal responsibilities of the city for its taxpayers and utility users, and balancing that with the reasons why we did the projects such as environmental. What I am hoping tonight is we have conversations related to the request that has been brought forth by the Fosses, and then also to have, at least an introduction or a conversation of the future connection charge policy. In the packet, we do outline a few questions is, the spirit intent is still valid, but is the execution need to be reexamined? And at the conclusion of our conversation, we're asking council to give administration direction on how to respond to the Fosses, and then further guidance as to what the council would like to do in regards to consideration of the future connection charge policy.
Okay, council, any questions up here?
Can I speak again?
Pardon me? Yeah, just a second. So, we got quite an extensive packet, and I've read all of that stuff. Some of us were here, you know, when it happened too, so we're familiar with it. I would just add this, and we're familiar with it. At that point in time, it's no good deed goes unpunished. It's kind of, no good deed goes unpunished. And back in the day, when the, when the projects were going through, there was a couple of reasons why it was adopted, in my opinion. And one was to allow the landowner time and opportunity to write the thing out, if you will. And at the time, lots were selling, they were selling like, like outcakes. And so, it didn't seem like, it seemed like a win-win for everybody. And of course, the market, you know, kind of went solid on it. So, it, but that was, that was the intent, and it was, I think it was rooted with good cause. But having said that, come forward then.
Can I speak in higher?
Sure, yep.
So, on the, on the property that we purchased in two thousand and twelve, that we did an assessment search in two thousand and eleven, and I'm not sure if you have that, but there was showing a levy balance assessment of forty-one thousand dollars due, and it was signed off on June first, two thousand and eleven. And then it does show, there was a request by First American and Carilla, and it did show that all, all assessments had been paid off at forty-one thousand dollars. So, when we bought the property, there was zero assessments in that search. We were not, we were paying any fees on this until we tried to sell the property in two thousand and nineteen. Two thousand and nineteen, the person buying our property went to close, and on the day of closing, their title company found an assessment, and it was one that we were not aware of. We were then given a lawsuit that date for false advertisements. We had to fight this for a while, and we ended up settling that. We got, that deal filled through. And then we proceeded with two more realtors to try to sell the property at an increased price to cover the assessment once we found out about it. No purchase offers that had happened. We had one offer, but they found out about the assessment, they holded it. Then we had another, tried to set an agreement where same thing. We would try to work out something with the city, they holded it as well. We said, well, we would try to cover part, you cover part, it's not unless you build on it. But nobody wants a property that's earning three percent interest for a hidden fee, and this was a hidden assessment. And had it been a regular assessment, it would have been found in our assessments. So, in two thousand and eighteen, we tried to work out with our lawyer. We hired a person who was a real estate lawyer, trying to figure this whole thing out. We now have somebody wanting to buy this April fifteenth. We cannot sell the property without this being dealt with. They do not, they hold, they told us. And we just don't think, like, if you look at the property, there's a power line going through what would be considered four of the lots, and it's the big city power, huge power link going through the lot. And when we had a little depth to divide it up, there's no way you can get the number of lots that, that they have the hookup charges for. You could maybe get a storage garage on there, you can't create a driveway. So, we had somebody actually look at that, there's no way to get all of these lots in. I know the previous seller, she was kind of coerced by her realtor, and she was in her, of her eighties to buy this up and put in the hookup fees because he thought maybe you could make up, she could make up some money. She didn't understand what it was. When she found out what the assessment was, her daughter had to step in and help him pay the forty-one thousand dollars to cover the house, the garage, so that they could just sell it, and that could be cleared. So, our frustration is that this continuing to earn interest higher than the value of the property. I just got our tax statement, and we bought it for two-eight-five, it's now considered to be at two-ninety-seven by the city. So, the amount of increase in taxes and early assessment versus our tax property value is well in excess of, I don't know. I can see if it, like I said, if it had been assessed, we would have paid it off. We would have probably not bought the property had we not, had we known this was happening. The last kind of thing, we got, and Brett's letter back to us said that there was no mystery, and we did look, like, through the area, and there was, I think, the Lindell Properties had an increase of something that happened, and they were able to settle with the city, I think, something similar where, and I don't know the details, and I, I just know that the Lindell Property had something similar happen where it, it was just in excess of what they could actually sell the property for. So, our thought was, we would like to be nice to the next seller, and give you guys at least something to clear it. And our thought was, we went back to when we bought the property, and that was the dollar amount that we came up with, plus the, and the interest on each three additional years from when we found out about it. And we thought that was fair because we're being what we know about, and what we have currently known from that point on. So, just leaving it, it could be up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this, and nobody would ever pay it, and it's just money that you guys could pay back. And so, our thought was to try to settle and clear it for the next buyers, and hopefully, we can get something worked out before the fifteenth when we close on the property, and if we can close on the property. I think that's all I have on there, but I have a lot of other work if you guys want. And I have tons of letters back and forth from two thousand and eighteen on, and a letter from Jeremy saying that the Fosses did not know anything about this connection charge until two thousand and eighteen, when that was brought up, but it, it was not brought up on our assessment when we asked the city in two thousand and eleven.
Thank you. Any questions up here, council?
I, I find myself in a really tough situation because I'm, I consider myself fortunate to be good friends of the Fosses for many years. And I'm aware of what you dealt with years ago, so I know that it's been an ongoing issue. And, you know, all I can think of is, if something stinks, change it. But how we make that happen fairly to the Fosses, and fairly perhaps to the people who have come to us previously, and we said, no, we can't do this. So, I don't have any answer other than this stinks, this stinks for the Fosses, this stinks for the city, this stinks for the buyers, and I want to come up with something to resolve.
Josh, can you pull up the, 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 yes, I have their, I remember their, he was talking about the highlights.
Just take me a minute.
Yeah, no problem.
While he's doing that, I'm a little curious about, you know, one of the key things that Dr. Foss brought up is the city failing to disclose this in two thousand and eleven. And I don't know if there's any record to be, that would show yes or no. I assume there aren't notes from that time, but to me, that's kind of a relevant factor in the negotiation side of this conversation, if that were to happen.
You know, we have provided the council all the communications that we've had regarding the request back in two thousand and eleven, and it's included as part of the exhibit of the original assessment rule that gives the indications of the payoff of the previous owner. But in the context of, of that, right at the bottom, is, is the indication that there are future connection charges. As I had previously indicated, future connection charges are not an assessment, it's a charge. So, it's not going to typically be on the records of the county. And that's where, in the RCA, I re, I indicate, or staff indicates that disclosure during, at the time of title searches, as it relates to the two thousand and eleven, I, I have to, to indicate that our records were not indicated. I would turn to the finance director to confirm that.
Do I have the others to address?
Your honor, council, I guess when we did assessment search in two thousand and eleven, look back through the searches, there wasn't anything in two thousand and eleven that assessment search was done at the time that property was sold. There were subsequent ones after that, but there, I didn't locate anything that was done at that time. Look back through all the assessment searches that we do, even when we have all the assessment searches that we do for, for title companies or realtors that do customs, but there wasn't anything listed at that time for that. The assessment was paid off. The original owner's daughter had acquired about it, and the future connection charge was disclosed, but there wasn't, it wasn't paid off when the regular assessment was paid off.
So, this exhibit we have, that's a record assessment revised eleven-twenty-one oh six. What is that from?
That's from the original improvement hearing. So, when we certified the records of assessment to the county, there was an original assessment of the property as part of the future connection charge program. The property owner has the right to elect to convert some of those assessments to connection charges. That's what the previous owner did in this case, convert five or six of water sewer assessments to connection charges. So, if you're looking at that record assessment, it does show the original future connection charge balance in the lower left corner. A lot of the disclosure that the future connection charge does increase, it's not due until the, at time of hookup or the property is subdivided, but it was converted, and we should contact the city for the current balance of that connection charge.
Do I have this assessment request? And if S G, I don't know whose initials this is, but it was from two thousand and eleven, and it showed that it was paid off.
It's not my initials or my shirt, it was, I'm sure it was already by. Yeah, it appears this shows the original forty-one thousand dollar balance of the special assessment that was outstanding in two thousand and eleven, is what's indicated on there. That's not a search that's done by the city, the city does it on, on the lower head, I guess, what we respond to as assessments or two plus. I guess I, I can't verify whose initials those are.
It's the same, I think, it's the city, and I was thinking, I just, we have chosen city.
It looks like that might be an internal document from title.
Jeremy, when you, a few years back, you made it out, but I can't remember. Letters were sent to the, to the owner's office or whoever, to remind them to tell people what they go get, and just because the county doesn't have it, if there's not, something here that they should also check with the city. It seems like our problem is, is, but we weren't, we're closing, we have, oh, you know, we're going to be, we weren't, we weren't going to, or he went to, he went to the county, and he paid off everything the county had, but nobody told him that this is, this is what's recorded, and the assessments aren't recorded, and so, there's probably something that the city can say. I think now he's ready to sell, and he brought it up, and so, I don't know how we, maybe aside from our discussion issue, but I don't know how, how we resolve that, where, where are you getting all the information that they need when they go there because, you know, he had a recent doubt that he paid off everything that all we had up there, but the bottom line is, we still had something going here. And so, I don't know what that answer is either.
I would be either of the, just encourage people that they should really check with the city and do the assessment search with the city, because there are also joint utility bills too, that we do a search or two, somebody requests assessment search, we review one of the results standing in joint utility bills too, that ultimately certified that they're unpaid, so.
Further question tying to what the mayor just brought up. This record of assessment provides eleven-twenty-one oh six, it is, I believe, what is that? The exhibit two on here at the bottom, that's where the comments, it says, no, this future connection charge exists for this parcel. Was this internal to the city, or was that something that the county would have had on hand?
The county would have had that as well. What happens is, the original record assessment is created when we do the assessment hearing for a project, and within fourteen days, the property owner is allowed to convert those additional assessments to a future connection charge as a way to not have to immediately pay those costs. After that's done, and the final interest rate is settled on the bonds, we send revised records of assessment back to the property owner, so that they see that's why it's, that's why it's indicated as revised record assessment from them, lower than the original record assessment, because those additional five assessments for water and sewer are converted to a future connection charge. So, that's shown up on the bottom, left-hand side of that record assessment. And then, future connection charge line, which is added on there, and then the records of assessment are sort of like to the county and have to be.
Can I ask a question? Is there a Minnesota statute that says that it cannot increase net value above the?
I'm not aware of one when it comes to future connection charges.
Is that considered a special assessment?
It's not a special assessment anymore, but it's a connection charge because the property owner allowed to, the city agreed to convert it to a connection charge. So, it doesn't follow the statute four twenty-nine when you're referring to, compared to the validation.
So, a couple of questions. If, if the title company come to the city, is there a fee that the city charges or search?
Yes, that's fifteen dollar search fee that they charge.
Okay, so on this form, there's no, there's no fee, but in the, in the line for city fee search. Except, and then the second page, it appears to me to be a search bracket, and the description is property taxes due. So, if that's the only description put in, that's what they got when they, they searched the county records is just the taxes due, not any, anything else?
So, that would be a closing, closing agency company here?
We were told that they did call to verify that number. Because when we had a clear contact with title company, they had known it was, they had called to verify that number with the city. But it's all very bad.
Again, it's what they asked.
Yes, and that's, that's where it's, it's, like I said, it's not something that we were aware of yet. We'd been aware of, it's, you know, at this point, it's kind of, it was beyond our control. And when we found out about it in two thousand and nineteen, and we want to make it right, so we want to make sure, you know, we've tried every situation possible. And the only thought that we had was that is, if that could be disposed like an assessment, then it wouldn't get any, that's earning interest, in our opinion, should be considered an assessment because it's earning interest, and hookup connections shouldn't be earning interest secretly by people's.
Well, secrets, strong word. I've been here twenty-six years, and we've gone through how we originally developed, I was on that committee, how we originally developed these assessment policies. And we're looking at how we can do this fairly to everyone. And in that process, Jeremy stated the number was four twenty-nine?
Statute four statute.
The statute four twenty-nine specifically tells us what we can charge for assessments. And we cannot charge a person a future hookup as part of an assessment. So, that's where this connection charge, this connection fee, we can charge a fee for the city, and we were, we were very much aware that this was going to be an issue because we, we did everything we could to make sure people understood it was there. We've sent letters out. As, as properties change hands, it should have been common. I, I can't say where the mistake was made, I guess where the mistake was made. But, you know, there's a person responsible to go out and figure out what, what is against your property. But, you know, I can't say who made the mistake, but a mistake was made. They didn't, they didn't look hard enough. They just went for title search, I'm guessing. And the title search has anything assessed to you, any delinquencies, anything filed at the county records, we pick up in a title search. This wasn't, because it's a fee that's, that's put on the property, and it was done with the, with the intent to make it easier for the current property owner, who had a big lot, who had six assessments in this case, and would have had to pay the whole thing, sewer and water.
My question is, would the city, they could send out statements periodically to let people know that there's something happening on the property, like a statement, totally three years on the property? Would they send out a statement saying, hey, this, this hookup needs a current interest on the property? You would like to take care of it? Here's a letter, here's how much it'll be. It just seems like it would make sense to send out periodically statements. Like, I have clients that have an outstanding bill, and it just includes interest, but they didn't come in to see me because they did have a current lien to provide here. And all of a sudden, they came in to see me, and now they owe seventy percent, you know, whatever, seven hundred percent more than what they did a lot of. I'd like to send out statements.
I'm, I'm processing what you're telling me, and it's kind of, a few things are coming back. Did we put, do we have a layer on our GIS system that talks about these connection charges? We've got, somehow, we've got it reported somewhere.
No, there's not a layer on our, on our GIS. The, the application that was originally filled out by the original owner does indicate how the process works. So, there's, as Brad did, there's eighty-six future connection charges outstanding. We had about a hundred and thirty when we started, so over fifty of them have been paid. Some people have periodically checked on them. But if you do mind too, the connection charge isn't necessarily due, so it's not like it's a, a amount that's, has to be paid. It's only if and when the property is subdivided and/or additional units are connected to that property.
Or sold.
Or sold, and it's, and it's connected, right?
And our current buyers, just as I had, like, they went to do a check, and they said there's no assessments. And they said, we call, they, they're like, we know there's assessments, but we just thought it was curious that we heard their title, they're making their call, and they didn't give them assessments. So, I don't know if they did the same thing that previously happened, but had I not told them that there were future hookup fees, that would have been super dishonest, like, mean transferring, I could sell the property, not say anything like the previous owner, and that's just going to be dishonest. And I'm trying to give money to the city so that they can pay off whatever bond they stole on them. And I think it's just, our, our situation is different because we have the situation of a, whatever, a year gap, seven year gap, where those, we didn't know, and the seven year gap stuff was accumulating. And I, like, we, like, did not have, think we would have paid that off or cleared it so that we would not be accumulating interest. Nobody leaves interest accumulating, no matter who you are, even if you ever develop something. You don't like your interest accumulating on your name, and that's, that's our long, long reason for this.
So, you bought the property not knowing there were connection fees, and owned it for seven years before you found out there were connection fees?
When we tried to sell it. And then they found out the day that closing, within four hours of closing, and then brought a lawsuit against us within four hours.
That next day?
Yeah.
Sure.
Because they were attorney buying the property, so.
I appreciate and understand your history, thank you. The reality is that these future connection charges, whether they're assessed or not, potential buyers are going away. So, our ability to sell our property, which we've been trying to do, is diminishing in return. If we pay this, which I think we're going to have to ultimately pay something to clear this so that somebody will buy it, we're losing our equity in that property that we've developed by having that. Not saying it's anybody's fault, terribly unfair. At a minimum, please make this a disclosure to those people so that anybody that has this future connection charge is handed a letter, maybe even they sign, yes, I own the future connection charge to the city of Baxter. Well, the, the previous property owner did sign something that said, sorry, the previous property owner, in order to change the assessment to a connection charge of a fee, had to sign something, correct, Jeremy?
That's right, there's an application that's above by the property owner to, for them to sign by.
But that one, that doesn't obviously necessarily go forward to other ones.
Because she, she is, like I said, she's elderly. She, what I was told when we, after we closed on the property, we're told, this is a very special property, you give it to us, please don't ever develop it. That's what I was told.
And, and we really didn't have any plans to develop it, but then we went to sell it.
We can't sell, it's not sold.
And all this became, no.
And we really want to close on it. And we really want to close on it and we don't have to.
Well, the clock starts when you discover. Exactly, which is why I made that proposal to pay the interest for those years that we knew about it. I'm not talking about payments. Okay, then I don't follow. I won't say anything else over here. I'll talk to you later. All right.
I won't say anything as a counsel. I'm just, may I comment?
Okay.
So any words of wisdom?
I just struggle because I feel like the city is not particularly at fault. You're not at fault. There's a third party who should have somewhere disclosed this. And from what I can see, it looks like the city did what was proper at the time. I think you bring up a fair point that if there's a way that we can create a system to send out every couple of year letters to continually notify people of this, makes a lot of sense if this isn't getting picked up the way it should be. Or, I mean, I've, I've been involved in a couple of real estate sales and I feel like you're at the mercy of some companies and sellers who have no insider to be truly honest. So that, that can be an issue. I don't know. I didn't feel like we were set up for this meeting and being in a work session for, for true negotiation of this particular situation. But I think there's, I mean, we've got to do something with these future connection charges as at least moving forward. I don't know about how we handle this specific situation that we're looking at. Either people need to pay the full assessment on date one, which is going to result in more tax forfeits or immediate sales, or we eliminate these, or we eliminate them at a certain point or cap the costs, which in a way costs the city money for having done these. But I think we need to discuss some sort of solution to this moving forward. I don't know about, I've got no good guidance for the group on this 10 day negotiation point. I don't know.
We have the, the model study task group. I mean, that it would take maybe a little longer to negotiate this or to talk about this. Because when we had talked to you and get, you know, we didn't get, or money in our office or emails, I've emailed Jeremy, we have emailed. I mean, I've talked to everybody about this property and everybody knows. All of this property, realtors now don't want to touch this property. And I've gotten through three realtors. So it's, it's just something that we'd like to resolve. And that was the best solution we could come up with. And I know it's just, I don't know. So we have it in escrow because we want to come to some kind of solution. But I also feel bad for anybody who's sitting on this that might not know. If you know about it, they had, be done with it. But it just, I just, I don't know how else, you know, to go forward for this.
This is, this is just a really rotten situation. And my heart goes out to you because I know you so well. And I can't help but believe that there was a, I'll test you over the title company. And having said that, it still doesn't help you with, with selling this right now. And I know you would never do anything dishonest or try to slide something behind that. Can we say for others what that's worth?
We're unable to see the previous title company because the original founder of, so we not go through. We're not suitable, but we've already checked into that and that is not possible. And so we were told to just try to, for us to either not disclose it as an assessment or to have some kind of special sign off with future buyers, which is scary inside your way. And we were told to just use a different company. So that's, that's as far as I go.
I just have to say, in principle, I appreciate the fact that you're not choosing to lie by omission with people that think you're doing the right thing.
I just, I think we all feel terrible. I, what am I concerned is that whatever we decide on this, we set the group, we set the new, the new precedent. We've got several more to follow. Maybe, maybe that's not all we want either, but.
Can you speak to the availability of that, of that power line? I mean, can you add to a five or four block? And when you check in five of the six lots, it's different with a power line now, right? For a bunch of years. I don't know if that makes a difference in all the other conditions.
Sure. So property is owned R1, low density residential. So in that zoning district, lots are supposed to be a minimum of 15,000 square feet and 100 foot wide. If they're a corner lot with two street corners, for example, if you're making a lot in this corner, it has to be 120 feet wide. So, you know, the power line is approximately here. And, you know, as staff, we review plats and the city ultimately approves plats based on designs that are submitted by private entities. We don't create designs of the city. We review designs based on our standards. So I guess without a design, can't really speak to the, the power line and how it impacts home construction. There's, with any given acreage or size of property, there's different possible layouts depending on what somebody wants to do. It's, that's up to a property owner and/or developer on how they want to lay it out. Logically, you'd probably lay out lots along the street frontages. And I think there's an exhibit in the pack that that kind of shows that with the assessments too. So I don't know if there's any other questions, but we have to look at that much more closely.
I know Brad, everybody, it's a subcommittee, so, is it, and I don't know if we can make the 15th of April, but is it worth studying with the smaller group or?
Well, yeah, obviously the intent of staff's RCA indicated that we believe that there needs to be a review of the future connection charge policy. As you indicated that, you know, there's always a constant effect to every decision made. And, you know, what on the 86, whatever decisions made here obviously is going to impact those 86 and what that financial picture is. I think that needs to be part of the review of, of, you know, the purview of, of the policy or any changes to the policy. If, if the council were to wish to establish a committee to, to review it, I'll work with that group to assemble as much information then get back to council as quickly as possible.
I would like to see that happen.
I hate to go with another question with so little time left, but I got to ask, on the exhibit that says excerpt from the assessment policy, there's two numbers with an A and B in the paragraphs. Sorry, I don't have the exhibit number. It's future connection charges, number 11. And then paragraph B talks about individual approved parcels that convert or subdivided in there at references entering into an assessment agreement with the property owner. I, I don't fully grasp what that means, especially in reference to the fact that we're kind of in a request for a negotiation.
The assessment agreement was a mechanism so that it didn't have to necessarily be paid right away. If they decided that they were going to either sell a property for the properties that do have to be paid, or if they were going to subdivide, the city would entertain that assessment agreement where it could be paid over time so that assess future connection charge balance, that would become an assessment again, that would be negotiated at that point based on that future connection charge balance. And then finance over five years or so, so that there was time to pay that if we were subdividing that property.
Is that, that was for the original, that's for 20 years ago, or does that apply to this situation in any way, shape or form?
I guess it would in a sense that if, for example, if this property has six parcels and the property owner decided that they wanted to divide it into six, those connection charges that when we do right now, if they were dividing them into six, but the city would, or would the property owner, if it was being developed to enter into an assessment agreement where thereby the future pension charges could not be paid over, say, five years on their property taxes as an assessment. So it just basically was giving that, or the time to pay that if they were subdividing and developing, I guess. Just wanted to add a point of clarification. I had earlier stated 15,000 square foot lots in R1, which is true, but this is also a Shoreland overlay district for White Sand Lake, so it's 20,000 square feet based on the Shoreland rules. Clarify.
Do you want to add a whisper?
Well, it sounds like the consensus from the council is to establish a subcommittee and if that's what the council wishes to do, I would ask that the council appoint two members to, to do a deep dive into the future connection charge policy.
If you want, there is a. I just got to tell you, I think that, had you asked correctly about your reverence on Lydell, I think that was court ordered. I think a judge decided on that plat, I may be wrong, but.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. So they decided to, to take that matter to court, to court, the judge made a decision to, so we didn't.
That was part of the 429, second process.
Yeah, part of the process. Well, thank you for sharing the lesson you see with us here. In the meantime, during the workshop, I get ready to go to the council.
So move second.
Should be proud of it. We have all papers.
Hey. How are we doing?
Starting three, two.